So the heart of hearing guy down there can hear.
If we can call back and forth.
Hey, watch your mouth. I can hear you.
It is six thirty. Pledge of allegiance.
He can hear better that way.
Huh? Vic, what?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Is there anyone here for public input? Anyone for two-minute public input? Anyone for two-minute public input? Hearing none. Review and approve council agenda.
Move to approve.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Consent agenda. Item A, approved two a.m. liquor license for Friends Bar. Item B, approved new massage enterprise. Alley at Remedies Therapeutic Massage. Item C, approved hiring process for part-time community service officer. Item D, approved hiring full-time police officer application process round two. And item E, approved performance measurement resolution.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Regular agenda. Item A, consider signage for the ledge amphitheater.
That agenda up here. So I, I, earlier this, um, probably back in April, I would think, we came to forward with some ideas and proposals for signage out at the ledge. And I think we kind of got the impression from the council that we needed to do a little bit more work on that. And I know that there's been a lot of interest in the potential of doing an electronic sign. And I think that's something that we feel that may be out on the Highway twenty-three site near our holding pond. That might be something that we might be able to do. And I know Meredith has been working with a gentleman that, this Richard Fenheis. We worked with him on a lot of the, um, AE, the AEDs. He does a lot of, he's got a lot of connections with a lot of businesses. So I think the idea would be is to put that type of a sign out there, potentially seeing what businesses might have an interest in helping be a sponsorship for that. So then that leads us to having a larger discussion about the other signage needs on the site. And the proposal that we had brought forward at a work session in previous, at our previous meeting, was from a different sign company. We went back and had a meeting with Scenic Signs. Scenic has a little bit more robust ability to put these kinds of signs together. And had them really identify and walk the entire site and identify to us where they think that the, you know, the signage was. I think we had a lot of discussion about, well, where should those signs be? You know, I think we, when we talked, you know, should we put them on the building? Should be, you know, on the stage building? Should we be putting it? Where should we be putting it? And so what you see before you is the recommendation that Scenic Sign has. And this sign that I have up on the board here is the sign that they would recommend putting at the corner of Parkway Drive and Seventeenth Avenue. What it does then by, what you see here is, is it, it's kind of becomes that directional sign. One, it's high enough of a sign that it's going to give some good, um, it'll give us a good, some good visibility off of Highway twenty-three. It's angled and, you know, enough where you'll be able to see that. It has the ability to be lit. And then what it does when people come up to that main entrance, which is where they believe most people will come, it kind of directs them where they need to go for parking. Now, parking is obviously in both directions, which is true. But then it also talks about like drop-off area and then the backstage area. So that is the sign that they would recommend for that, um, for that location. And then, I gotta find the other one.
Is that lighted?
Yes. Yep, both of them.
In the corner?
Yes. I'll show it back up.
If you spend the money to run power to it.
That one has power, close, I think.
Close.
It does. It, and so.
My question on the lighted ones would be, are we smart to go with the green energy type thing? Are we, are we smart to go with solar on those or not?
I don't even know that I asked that question. I'm not really sure.
I, I would just, just a thought.
I never thought to ask Darryl that question from Scenic. You'll have to excuse the architectural rendering on this. This is your administrator trying to give you an idea of where this sign could go.
What time of the night was that when you were doing that?
There, Mike, you see the lighted one, and that's the same kind of, so what we, what we had, what they did was they tried to take and make both signs have some consistency to them. And what I was trying to show you here is if you see behind here, there are these little cement, these are where your flags are going to go. And right in the middle of this is another pine tree. So the idea was this sign could either be double-faced or it could be, um, single-faced. The difference in it is about three thousand dollars in cost. And as we were looking at it, if, from a positioning standpoint, which I was trying to show you, because you got the sign there, if you position that and angle it, I think from my perspective, looking at it with Bill, we think you could get away with just doing the single-face sign. And actually, the way it would be sit in proximity to the, to that site, it would actually lay out fairly nicely. However, if you really feel strongly, it could go the other direction, but it would be facing the other way. And it'd be angled a little bit differently there. So that sign is the second one that is being recommended as well. Mike, just to show you again, there's, in the corner there on the left side, you'll see the lighted part of that sign that's being proposed.
Where was that second sign?
That, oh, I'm sorry. That second sign is actually on the corner. That's the main entrance where the Parkway Drive entrance is. So that's the, um, you know, the paved parking lot there on Parkway Drive. So those were the two signs that they recommended, that if you're going to move forward, you know, that I would, you know, that those would be the two signs that they would be looking at doing now. We did talk, you know, in the future, you know, we've talked about putting up some banners and some flags and maybe some other secondary signage and having some consistency to that. What I can tell you, one of the things that, that we really like is that this really does play well off of what the, the look of it. And I think it is a nice finishing touch. Of course, all of this comes at a cost. And so what you see here is the, the proposal here for number one is the large sign, which is this one here. I gotta go back to finding my, that's the, and that is with it being lit, the cost of that is fifty-five thousand nine ninety-five. You still have to run the electrical to that, as, as I mentioned in the staff report. And then the other two here is whether or not you choose to do that secondary sign of whether or not you were interested in doing it single-faced or double-faced. And like I said, it's about three thousand dollars in difference between, between that. And so you would have, um, both of those, just going back to my report. So in total then, you're right around seventy, or eighty-six thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, including the electrical. So I think Bill had anticipated, he's talked to Design Electric. There's already power out on Parkway Drive that's very, fairly close that would be run. And then the other one would be pulled off of the light pole on the corner of Seventeenth and Parkway, which would take a little bit. So I think he anticipated after talking to Design, a total cost of electrical to run those things closer to that is just about ten thousand dollars total. And it was just a round number that we were trying to put together on that. In having some discussion with Keith about putting these forward, he is actually recommending that we would be moving forward with both of them and installing both of those signs right now. There has been some additional funds in the reserves that have come in that he thinks that we should take advantage of and utilize that and finish that off. In some conversations with, um, Scenic Signs, they're hoping that they can have the signs done with by around the tenth of August. Some of that's going to be dependent. We've got to verify that the electrical pieces can move forward. And the bases of those signs, I've got to make sure that they included those bases. Or if they were going to look at having Tysons put those bases together. And that's the part that didn't get clarified on this part. But nonetheless, um, we could get both of those signs done and hopefully be done by the, by the first concert that we would have in August.
That, uh, second sign or the small sign?
Yep. This one.
Yeah, if, if we do that one-sided.
Yep.
Really gonna be able to see it when you're driving by?
Well, yeah.
I was trying to imagine how that would look only one-sided.
So it's hard to show there, but our thoughts are is that it's going to go at a forty-five degree angle. It's not going to be, so if you look at the picture there, it kind of looks like it's more north-south. It's going to go northeast, northwest, southeast angle to match the layout of the flags and those trees. So it's all, yeah, you'll definitely see it more coming eastbound than you'll be westbound, but you'll definitely see it when you're coming by.
It's just not going to be ninety degrees to the road.
Right.
You, you can do that, but then you're paying for two-sided sign, three thousand dollars more, and is it that much value? We kind of felt that it really wouldn't be.
Because you're.
More attractive this way because of the.
Because you're going to put it in between the flag poles at the same angle.
Yes.
So the flag poles, and just so you know, they were putting them up as I came here tonight, so they'll be up. But you got the flag poles that are in a triangle with you got the US and the city and then the state in the back. And then we got three pine trees in the same thing, same triangle. And in front of the pine tree is the sign.
Any pine trees?
Huh?
The pine trees are there.
Yep, they're there already. So.
Now, then it, it angles with the, with the flag.
That's, I just couldn't really show it very well by trying.
Yeah, I understand.
And saving three thousand dollars too, so.
And we kind of felt like if you put it the other way, that it would, it would, it wouldn't really tie in as well.
This ties in, yeah, I can see where this ties in then with, with the flag poles and the whole, that whole entrance.
And if you remember right, when you do double-sided, the ledge is going to be right in the right logo one way and the opposite the other way.
Right.
You can be done, but it's just.
Okay, no, that's right. That's, that's good. All right, Council, your wishes, any questions?
I think, um, yeah, you had mentioned solar. You know, for ten thousand dollars, um, I think we should probably look into doing a little solar out there with the signage.
I don't know how that can be done and if the cost of the solar would be less than the electrical. That part we would have to verify that with.
With solar, at least you're, you don't have to pay a yearly amount every year if the solar works properly.
Wow, that.
But the photovoltaic part would have to be bigger than the sign.
That would be my, that's after I, when I said it, I think that solar we could use.
We already, we have power out there for the flagpole lights.
We could use some of that.
And it's already there, so we're not talking about a great extreme amount of power for either one of these signs because they're all LED. The biggest cost is where I put the money in is on Seventeenth Avenue. Because we have no power there. We have to tap into a streetlight, take out some concrete, bury some condit across. We're not sure what the bedrock's like there. So I, but that's where the money's at, but we're not talking about huge, huge lights.
Yeah.
It's, it's all in the sign like Sean showed those pictures. It's just backlit, stand out the letters, so.
And if we, and, and I think we should do this, and I don't think, I think we should get it done this year. If we can get it done, the sooner the better, I think. I still, I still think that the solar panels on some of these, on our parking lots, when we get our parking lots and stuff like that, I think it's something we should look at. Because Sean and I, where we are up north, they have them out in the middle of nowhere.
Yeah, they do.
They got streetlights, I mean, in the middle of the woods, they got streetlights with solar, so.
That's, that's where the beauty would be, is looking at it for the trails.
Yep.
To do stuff like that, and you could do some sort of thing, but.
All right. Any other questions?
Well, I didn't really want to spend money on signage till I got the one on twenty-three, but.
I'm really hoping that I can get the.
It's kind of begrudging because now we're going to spend money that I wished later on I had.
Yeah.
To buy the sign I wanted.
But I'm really hoping that we can get, take advantage of that, and it's, it's hard to do that when it's not been open yet, so.
Yeah.
And, and I, we, that's what we, that's what our hope is.
Yep, and I think it's better to have signage out there. You know, everybody kind of knows where it's at, but we get some signs out there, then people will definitely know where it's at.
All right. Your wishes?
Yeah, we really need a sign, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the elevated sign with the proposed cost of fifty-five nine ninety-five, including the eight thousand for electrical and the single-phase sign, item number two.
With the power.
And I'd like it, the motion to also include that we have it installed as soon as possible.
With the power.
Tomorrow is.
To that second one also.
Going forward.
All right. With the power to that second one also.
Oh, yes, absolutely. Number two.
Yep, okay.
I'll second that.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Maybe we'll have signage for our first concert.
Do we know what the cost of that electronic billboard would be on?
No, I don't know that yet.
We haven't looked at that yet, but I, I agree.
Got to decide what it is that we're going to do.
It's a lot.
We have to find out where we can put it out there, how it's going to look. And I do think that, you know, I mean, one of our neighbor cities has it, and they advertise businesses on it and stuff, so they generate income from that, so. Anyway, all right.
If it makes you feel any better, Frank, if we do that electronic sign, we could probably use some franchise fees to assist us with that as well, which you wouldn't be able to do out here.
Yeah, that would make me feel better.
I should have told you that before you believed it.
All right.
I'm glad you agreed anyway.
Item B, conditional use permit. Nature's View Landscaping.
I'll be just a second, John, as I close out of some of that.
First of three for me tonight here. As noted, this request is from Leroy Ludwig and Bob Zabinski. Mr. Ludwig is looking at purchasing a portion of Mr. Zabinski's property for constructing his home and landscaping business in an A1 ag rural residential district. This is on the Zabinski property at corner of Conery Road Six and Conery Road one thirty-seven on the southern end there. You didn't see it because it was withdrawn ultimately before it made it that far because Mr. Ludwig wanted to look at other options. But Mr. Ludwig has been looking at properties in the area since summer last year, ultimately landing at this proposal with Mr. Zabinski. The applicant is looking to develop both a home and their landscaping business on the property. It would be a Shouse-type construction, post-frame construction, residential storage building. Applicant has been coordinating with their architect builder and the city building official on potential plans for the property. The Shouses are a little bit unique, so they want to be sure they're kind of working together on that with the hope that it would get approved. We couldn't issue any building permit for the property unless both a conditional use permit would be approved as well as the plating of the property, because the property would have to be separated through the plating process. Couldn't be a simple split. We have a site plan with the proposed configuration as well as a narrative of the, of the business. Same as was discussed last year. The business functions essentially the same when, as when they were located nearby. They were on the southeast corner of town for about fifteen years. Never posed an issue for the city as far as I'm aware, never, certainly since my time here, six years. Operated a pretty good, a pretty good operation down there. Typically have five days a week in the summer, summer hours seven a.m. to five p.m. Winter hours approximately twelve hours after a snowfall for plowing activities. As with some others in the area, they do denote the proposed driveway and parking areas as gravel. City ordinance notes that a conditional use permit would typically be a trigger for a property to have hard surface. But, um, given the rural nature of the areas, I would advocate that they be allowed to proceed with gravel at this time at least, with the opportunity to review in the future if there's additional construction or expansion. As I mentioned, the property would have to be planted, but they didn't pursue it at this time just to ensure that conditional use permit would move forward before they commit to plating. I would add, because we've, we have had recent discussion with the council and the potential southwest beltway in the area. This project is in the general vicinity of a potential future alignment. Very, very rough, but it's in that general area. However, as there's no firm plan for the project or allocated funding at this time, I wouldn't advocate for holding up or, or not approving a project in the area at this time at least due to the potential future alignments until that's more ironed out. I have advised the APO and their consulting team for the, of the potential for this project so it can be included as part of their evaluations as they go forward. Planning Commission reviewed this request at their June eighth meeting and held the public hearing. Didn't have any comments, and they recommended approval with the conditions as proposed and attached.
All right. Council, got any questions?
How many acres is this?
Fifteen, was it?
It would be, it would be about ten.
Ten.
Yeah, they would go for the bare minimum, the ten, ten acres a minimum in the area. They could, they could go larger if they wanted, but I think they want to stick to ten.
Yeah, I think Zabinski's wanting to hold a little bit of that.
Oh, I would add that Mr. Zabinski, as you're aware, is a member of the Planning Commission, but he did not have input on this request. He wasn't in attendance at the meeting in any case, just for the record.
Any other questions?
Is this going from A1 to R1 then?
No.
It will stay A1?
It, it would stay A1. If, if he were to split it and just build a house there, there would be nothing required as long as he meets the ten-acre minimum. But because he wants to have a landscaping business as part of his home, it would trigger that conditional use permit as, as kind of the all-other uses as, as may be similar. It's under that catch-all category we have.
I just kind of want, because on an R1, don't we allow home business?
It, it's.
And we do have some in town.
It's weird. It's not to this level.
It, it's outside of the, the home occupation bounds, what we would typically allow for a home business. Home businesses under our, under our home occupation ordinance are more for office-type uses, some very limited activities. Landscaping, uh, landscaping-type business would be out of bounds for that, especially if you have employees reporting there.
All right. Any other questions, concerns, Council?
I'll move to approve with all the conditions.
I'll second.
Either one. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. Item C, Variance, DeLily, seven fifteen First Street South. Believe that's for a fence.
Yep, that's correct. This was identified as part of a regular building permit review. We got an application in for the fence. Usually, no big deal, but we saw that it does extend into the front yard, which under our ordinance, for anything new, is this not specifically allowed, even though we do have a handful of examples around town of both residential and commercial and industrial-type fences. Most of them are probably older and grandfathered. So I did reach out to the applicants to inform them of this and give them the options of, you know, here's what you could do. We flagged this as part of the review. The owners noted to me that it's, they're pursuing it more for security and screening purposes than anything. They, they've had some trespass issues with the neighboring motel property. Most of the, of the employees and the clientele of the, of the business are women, and they've had some run-ins with people coming over from the, um, the adjacent motel. Nothing serious, but enough that they would like to kind of divert them in a different direction and not be able to walk straight across. They did opt to pursue the Variance as a, as an option. It's, it's a traditional fence, six-foot vinyl height, usually pretty common for a commercial residential. They would like to take the fencing to the property line closest to the road. That would still leave quite a bit of space between the, uh, the fence and the, and the road, so there wouldn't be any sightline or visibility issues with traffic coming or going. Still has about ten, twelve feet. I, I would see this as being created by a neighboring property and outside of the applicant's control. Doesn't, it's not something they created. And given that its intent is to provide a little bit minimum level of security and screening, I would be supportive of the Variance in this, in this instance. I think they've established their practical difficulties. Planning Commission reviewed the request at their June eighth meeting as well. They did not have any concerns. No concerns were heard during the public hearing, and Planning Commission recommended approval. So I, I would recommend approval of the Variance as well and request adoption of the attached resolution.
Council, any questions?
I'll move to approve the Variance.
I'll second.
Further discussion. Chief, just on a side note, are we having any troubles over there?
No.
Okay.
I, I want to say, it's been quiet. I mean, we, I think we've had a few calls, but nothing like the old days.
All right, I got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. And item D, Variance, Roy UnderSander, eighty-six forty-one Old Highway Road End.
Uh, another Variance. This one for, not unlike the last one. This is a, a typical, under our ordinance, we have prohibition of putting an accessory structure, a garage or shed in the front yard. And that's, applies to both the, the ag rural residential areas as well as our more traditional, smaller lots in, in the heart of town. This property at Old Highway Road North was previously platted in preparation of eventual development of a home on the property. UnderSander's have some family properties there, and Mr. UnderSander, Mr. Roy, is coming, looking to build his, his home in this currently vacant parcel. In the planning stages of home construction for the property and would like to locate the detached garage in the, what's the formal front yard of the property and in front of the home. Proposed garage would still be approximately one hundred and seventy feet away from the, from the property line along, along the street frontage and sixty feet away from the, from the northern property boundary, what would be the side yard. This area is pretty heavily wooded. I did visit it firsthand and walked through with the applicants. I will typically do that on the front end of a Variance to give them an idea of whether it's, you know, they always have that right to apply, but I'll give them a fair shake and see if it's something I'm going to be supportive of or not. So I typically will do a tour on the front end of that. I could see that this is pretty heavily wooded, and it's going to screen a lot of the visibility from, from the road. The garage is proposed solely for private and personal use and not associated with any proposed business use. It's a traditional garage, not a pole shed. I could see that the property, there's a desire to avoid impacting the sloped and graded areas or clear some additional old growth trees, as well as preventing impact to a longstanding family trail that runs through there and has been maintained for, for years and years. The applicant also submitted a pretty thorough narrative that was attached outlining their, their rationale for justification. And I would concur with the assessments that they gave. I, I believe that there's justification for the approval of the Variance and that they've established practical difficulties as well. Nothing they created. They're trying to limit the impacts to the property, and I don't think it's going to adversely affect the neighboring properties. Planning Commission reviewed the request also at their June eighth meeting. There was owners of an adjacent property in attendance, had a couple of questions, but they were satisfied with the answers that the UnderSander's provided. Planning Commission recommended approval of their request. So I would recommend approval of the Variance as requested and adoption of the attached resolution as well. I did, um, add in the resolution, I believe, a few conditions of approval. The garage shall be located in area depicted by the site plan submitted as part of a Variance request application. Minor revisions or deviations may be approved administratively, subject to approval of Planning and Community Development Director. Number two, garage plans shall be same as, as or substantially similar to the plan submitted to further review with the Variance and is approved by city council and is determined by Planning and Community Development Director, including windows on all sides of building. And lastly, number three, the garage is subject to all other standard ordinance and building code requirements and building permits shall be obtained prior to commencement of construction activities. So with all those items, I would recommend adoption of that.
Council, questions, concerns?
I'll move to approve the Variance with the conditions.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the Variance and the attached resolution. Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously.
Thank you.
All right. Pro bills.
Move to pay the bills.
Second.
Further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed unanimously. I do have a letter here from Junior Achievement thanking the city of Wake Park for our donation of Junior Achievement. That's all I have. Sean?
Just want to let the public know that we. Just want to let the public know that we are planning an open house at the Ledge Amphitheater for Tuesday, July 13th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. More information will be on our website. I hope to see you there.
All right, anything else, council? Bill?
I've got one for Bill. The people over on 8th and 9th Avenue by the bridge would like to thank you for cleaning up the mess that someone created.
That's the county. That's actually theirs to take care of, so.
But the county cleaned it up.
I'd like to take credit, but-
You could have.
Take it and run, Bill. Take it and run, Bill.
Something I didn't do.
Tomorrow you're going to get it the other way, so look out.
Yep, they like, when they got the call, I talked to you and you did, evidently you must have went right over it because they said it was cleaned up, so.
John, you got anything else?
No, sir.
Chief? Carla? Paul?
No.
All right, we can adjourn this meeting. No, we have to recess. No, we can-
Just read your-
Yeah, can we, do we adjourn first or recess?
Just read your notes.
Just read your notes.
Yeah, I know.
We're closing it for a person.
We're closing it for, for-
You're just closing the meeting.
And then we're going to reopen to close it later.
And you'll adjourn after that.
All right, so we are going to re, we are going to close this meeting, so anybody who's not here for the litigation part, part of this should leave, please.